Okay, good evening. This is a public meeting of the School Board of the West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors at the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy, pardon me, was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I ask at this time from the Superintendent if the meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order at the time of 5:32. Note that Mr. Chris Weigart and Mrs. Toni Schmidt are both absent and excused, and if you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we looking for an approval of the agenda?
Motion approved.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we will, we have come to the public participation portion of our agenda. I have one card for this evening. If anyone else wishes to address the board, please come up after the first speaker and present me with your card. I'm going to quickly summarize the board policy. It is Board Policy 187. It prescribes the nature and the procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available at the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the President prior to the meeting or when allowed by the President. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name and relationship to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the Superintendent of Committee or take remarks into consideration in further action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response. I will invite participants forward to speak. There's a physical timer to help manage your time. To help ensure that all participants are heard and the meeting runs officially, please abstain from conversation, comment, or applause during or after public participation. So tonight, we only have one speaker, Mr. Schultz, if you'd like to state your name and your relationship to the district.
Hi there, Phil Schultz. Is this someone? Not sure. Phil Schultz, taxpayer and father of students in the district. When the S3 survey became available for the general public, I was enthused to fill it out and be a voice, although one that isn't listened to very much, as to how much of these dollars could be best utilized. While filling it out, I noticed under the section, "Please select three priority areas for the district." The first item was to use this money to help balance the budget. Not sure why the budget isn't already balanced. Why does this administrative team feel the need to spend money that isn't there? Does anyone in this district truly know how to live within their means? The district got lucky with having these dollars available to use basically however they see fit, as per past comments. If these words are true, I strongly suggest the district reevaluates its resource in curriculum in reading, writing, and arithmetic. These subjects are not being taught like we all know them to be taught when we were in school. I oftentimes feel like a letdown when I sit down to help my son with his math homework because I wasn't taught array tables and ratio tables, which takes a simple multiplication problem like 25 times 15 and turns it into two to three times more work than the standard algorithm. The standard algorithm was never broken, and it didn't need to be fixed. Perhaps this district suffers from a little bit of FOMO. Let me tell you, you can't miss out on what you can't afford. Perhaps maybe we could use a little Dave Ramsey on it, guys. I'm shocked the survey had nothing regarding school security, or rather more nonsense about how to continue to mitigate COVID, you know, the thing. Let's discuss school security. Why don't our schools have more security cameras? Why aren't, or are we using our school liaison officers the best we can? Personally, I would be all for hiring combat veterans who have been in high-pressure, high-intensity situations to help patrol our school and provide clearance to everyone entering any of the schools. If not a combat veteran, let's get our LEOs to start using this as a standard of practice. While there's a little risk of something happening, bad, terribly bad happening in West Bend, there's still a risk, and we need to be prepared for any situation. Installing locks and doorbell cameras might also be another good idea to help keep unwanted guests out of our schools. If this money is used to balance a budget and money is still available, can resources and materials that will challenge the students, instead of enabling laziness because it's too easy, be put into effect? For example, the 1776 social studies resource was apparently required at college reading level, so the district settled on a resource with numerous grammatical errors and potential political bias. In my honest opinion, the school district needs more leaders, people who aren't afraid to speak up when something is wrong, people who are willing to stand tall and strong when the going hits tough. The times of being complacent and following on the status quo are over. I'd like to think that's why you're all in the school board, but I have my doubts as to what some of your true motives really are.
Thank you. I have no other cards, so I will close the public participation portion of the meeting. Moving on to the consent agenda. Tonight underneath the consent agenda, we have minutes of the June 20th regular board meeting and the executive session. We have nine contracts and three transfers. We have two resignations, no retirements, and the Fund 41 Project Amendment to our security, and I am looking for a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Consent agenda passes. Right now, we'll move on to our reports, so we have our district nursing report. I'd like to welcome Amy Brager, our district nurse, to the podium.
Good evening. Oh, let's see here. Good evening, members of the board.
Is it on?
You are on.
Okay.
I just wanted to take a minute. I'm Emily Melstrand, I'm the Director of Student Services, and I wanted to lead tonight by welcoming Amy Brager. Amy is our district nurse, and she's gonna do an update on our, basically she's gonna do a nursing report on the previous year, 2021-22. And I just wanted to take a minute, I know this isn't gonna be a part of her report, but I really think it's important that we just take a second to honor the amazing work that she has done over the course of the past two years. She has an awesome team of professionals who work to support our students in terms of their, their physical, sometimes their emotional health as they're coming in and out of our district clinics, and Amy's leadership has been fantastic. As you know, the last couple of years have presented some challenges that were, that were unexpected, and she rose to the occasion in every single instance to modify plans, change plans on the fly, and support students as her first priority throughout that. So I'm gonna introduce to you Amy Brager, and she is gonna take over and present the 21-22 nursing report.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Emily. That was very nice of you. Hi, everyone. I am Amy Brager, the district nurse. I have been working as a nurse in this district for eight years, five and a half under the role of the district nurse, and as you can see up there on the screen, that is my oldest of almost three children, so I'm excited about my new role this, this fall as a parent of the West Bend School District also. He's in a little four K, and we're super excited about the adventures that lie ahead. So, we're gonna go over just a couple things to summarize our, our school year last year. Listed here is the breakdown of all the healthroom professionals. A healthroom professional can be either an RN, an LPN, or a medical assistant in our district, and each school has one of those assigned to them with exception to early childhood. And then the high school building has two nurses on any given day, given the volume and size of their buildings, but we also have support staff that floats throughout the district part-time, and those individuals may cover absences, or if there's a need on a field trip for a medical student, or really any projects that we have that we need support on, and that's actually how I got started in the district, so they save the day in lots of ways. This is just the framework for our 21st century school nursing practice. It comes from the National Association of School Nurses, and most school nursing, school nurses in Wisconsin and across the country use this model to serve their students. We have a wide variety of medical needs and different conditions in our, in our district, all ranging with different amounts and volumes of needs, but this is just kind of a breakdown of our most common. So you'll see, we had 283 students that have inhalers, that use inhalers for asthma within our schools. There are 23 students last year with type 1 diabetes. If you know and love anyone with type 1 diabetes, you know how much care and maintenance and self-advocacy and education goes into, into having that condition. So our healthroom professionals spend a lot of time with these students and their families to help them succeed in school and then in life after school as well. And then we also train unlicensed assistive personnel in each of our buildings to assist with card counting, insulin administration, really whatever would be needed beyond if a healthroom professional was not there, or if they needed additional support. You'll see, under emergency medications, we have 186. That is mostly EpiPens and Dystat. So EpiPens would be used and have been used in our schools for anaphylactic reactions or life-threatening allergies. Dystat is something that would be used for someone that's having a seizure, has a seizure disorder already. There are a couple other emergency medications listed in that, but those are the two primary ones that we would see in that column. Under medications administered, there are 17,268. So that is primarily prescription medication. There are PRN, like Tylenol, Ibuprofen kind of dosage in that number as well, but it's mostly prescription medication for, I would say ADHD is probably our number one cause, our number one diagnosis. And then kind of onto that is the, the last number there, which is the hardest to obtain in our database. You'll see there, it says over 12% of our students have a diagnosed mental health or behavioral health condition. Really, that number is 12% of what we know, right? So those are students that we know have a diagnosis, that are receiving treatment or medication within our schools. There are a lot more students that we see that exhibit symptoms of mental health or behavioral health that are not receiving a diagnosis or treatment at this time, so we know that number is growing as well. Of our clinic dispositions, we saw 63,158 students in our clinics last year. That's the highest I've ever seen it, and that I have a feeling that mental health and behavioral health has something to do with that. So we see, we're seeing an increase of students coming in with somatic symptoms. They might have a headache or a stomach ache or something that is definitely related to some sort of anxiety, depression, those types of related conditions. So we, we'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple slides, but I think that's part of why that number continues to grow. Our jobs, we always say, in the schools are to keep kids in school safe and healthy and ready to learn, so the 4,323 students sent home are, were determined by the student, or the healthroom professional. So those, that number is reflective of healthroom professional thinks you need to go either to see a provider or to go home. All the rest, up to 60-some thousand, were either sent back to class after an intervention or resting in the clinic for a while, and then, or picked up by a parent or guardian. The calls to 911, we had 18 this last school year, which is also pretty high compared to other school years. Sometimes paramedics will come and assess, and, you know, by the time they're here, everything's kind of settled down, so the student may go home with family and monitor from there, but out of that 18, we did have 11 transported to the hospital after that assessment from paramedics, which is probably our highest number that I've seen yet also. I'm not gonna read this whole slide to you, but one of the things I asked my healthroom professionals to do at the end of every school year, part of their evaluation process is to do a self-evaluation, and one of the three nurses that work in our high school has been a veteran. She's, she is a 20-year-plus nurse in a variety of different medical, clinical spaces, and she just had a really great summary, I think, of what the day in the life of a school nurse might look like. A lot of people think that school nursing is super boring. You're sitting under butt all day, passing out Band-Aids, and I unfortunately used to be one of those people, prior to my life here. I worked in, in, for eight years at Children's Wisconsin in the pediatric ICU. I specialized in pediatric trauma, and I would not have thought a single day that I would be a school nurse someday in my life. It was simply something too boring for me. I was forced to do a school health clinical through going back to get my bachelor's degree, and that's what wound, what cut me here, or wound me up here, and I loved it. It was so astonishing to me how critical the needs were, how the community needed nurses in the schools, how they, the medical professionals are just so necessary on a daily basis for assessment and using expertise and really providing a lot of resource for a variety of things. So, just if you get a chance to scan that over, she talks a little bit about in one week in the high school, how she had six different emergencies that she responded to, and one of them was a student with a diabetic emergency, one was a student that was having a seizure for the first time, one was a student in a physical altercation. She had to work closely with the police department. So it's, I mean, really, you never know what you're gonna step into on any given day, and I'm super proud of our team, not just at the high school, but throughout the district because it really requires a high assessment skill and an ability to resource for their teams. We're not gonna talk a lot about COVID, but it was a great deal of our work last school year still. We, in some cases, felt that it was even harder last year because they just, the recommendations and the updates and the guidelines kept changing, and we had to stay on top of that. Superintendent Wimmer and I had several phone calls at 9:00 PM on the Saturday, saying, "They just changed this. What do we, you know, we need to meet with the people and call all our people." So it's, it just was constant, constantly updating what we were trying to, to make sure that we are doing the best for our community. I can't even express to you how much work the healthroom professionals did. I can't even put that into words, but it was certainly a lot of work. We had the cumulative number there that you see of positive investigations. It says a little over 1,000. I will tell you, that's not exact. That's why I have an asterisk next to it. Somewhere towards the end of the year, we stopped doing positive investigations and went towards cases, but we lumped together a couple different populations for privacy reasons, so it's in the ballpark, but just so everyone knows, it's not an exact number of people are counting at home. Oh, and then I just thought, I added this slide picture because I went to a school nurse conference in April, and I never in my life would have imagined that the keynote presenter who spoke about COVID and how it affected our work as school nurses would open their, their keynote speech with Crazy Train by Ozzy Osbourne. So that was kind of interesting that that was the reflective summary of my career at that point. Aside from COVID, we still managed to get a couple things done. We have our certified CPR instructors on staff, so they work to obtain CPR certification for over 80 staff members. We still did all of our medication training and unlicensed assistive personnel training. That UAP training is not just for students with diabetes. We also have students that have urinary catheterization, G2 feeds, other types of medical procedures that we train additional staff in the buildings for. We were able to bring back our vision screenings with the West Bend Lions Club and expanded that from kindergarten to first grade also, since we didn't catch them the year prior. Dental, the dental program we helped to coordinate, we worked on our Project Adam drills, we served on a variety of committees and consults. A huge thank you to West Bend Fire Department and West Bend Police Department. They're an awesome partner in this community. They always help us to provide education to our staff and help with our Project Adam drills. They're always great to respond in emergencies, so we really appreciate working with them really closely. And then, we still provided our clinical experiences for the BSN staff and that is, or BSN nurses, and that is something that is dear to my heart since that's where I kind of came from here.
Do you have a question?
No, just Project Adam, that reference is for AED training specifically, so that middle picture, that's what you see, that's what that means, so it's in, in reference to that, that's the main moment.
And thank you so much. There, we, all of our sites are hard-safe through Project Adam, so we are all, we all have teams designated to training, and we work with our fire department pretty closely and our police departments as well, to make sure we maintain our designation and practice our drills throughout the school year. And then lastly, our district humanization compliance this year was still above 99%, which makes me a happy camper because if it's below 99%, the state requires exclusion of students for the following school year, so our team works really hard, making hundreds of phone calls and a variety of other communication efforts to make sure that we don't have to put our students through that.
And just a reminder to our public, Wisconsin is a state with personal conviction waivers, all of that, so our compliance isn't that 99% of our kids are vaccinated, it's that we have either entered the vaccinations and we've received a waiver for medical reasons or a personal conviction waiver, and that's logged, so that's what that means.
And that's why it's super important, thank you for, if the nurse is bothering you a million times to sign a waiver.
Just let us know.
You just need to know what, which way you're gonna roll, and then we can have it locked on there so that we are in compliance with the state. So some nursing goals that we have for the next school year. We are super excited to have some more time to get back to the, the projects that we are passionate about. Usually, each of our healthroom professionals takes on something within their site that they find, can find improvement upon, that's health-related. We know as a district, we have a lot of work to do to improve the mental health and meet that mental health rise that's kind of happening in our communities all over the place, but with that, we will be collaborating with student services to increase that, or to work together to strengthen that model. We're planning to expand the vision screenings because we received some evidence that vision changes, I guess, around fourth, fifth grade, so hopefully we will include fourth and fifth grade in our screenings this year as well as the kindergarten level. And then, over the course of last school year, I was nominated and elected to the Board Directors for the Wisconsin Association of School Nursing, and I was re-elected in April, so I am excited to continue to serve on that board. I basically serve what the equivalent of CISA 6, so District 6 and CISA 6 are the same people and all the district nurses within there, so it's been a great learning experience so far, and the networking has been wonderful, and I hope to bring some of that education opportunities back to our staff too. So, thank you so much for letting me present to you tonight. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Anyone have questions for Amy? On behalf of the board, thank you.
Just one good question.
I'm sorry. We can't go after the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Sorry. Sorry. So anyways, I wanted to thank you on behalf of the board, and please thank your team because we know it's critical work that you do, and, you know, looking at your numbers, some of those numbers, as you stated, were the highest that you've seen, so obviously the highest probably in, in district history. So hopefully we can continue to do some, not necessarily reactive work, but some proactive work in the future, which it sounds like your goals really look like that's what you're headed towards. So again, thank you and congratulations on your election and your upcoming new little addition, and welcome to the West Bend School District family as parents, so it's a great place to be, so we're excited.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'm sorry, that's me.
I'm lost without Chris to my head. So our next report would be our superintendent's report from Superintendent Wimmer, please.
I know we had a question from the audience there. Feel free to grab any one of the staff members, and we can answer that after. Right now, it's just reserved for board time, but we're happy to answer those questions. When I saw these last board meetings, there were some glasses left behind. We haven't had a request for an owner, so if there was anyone in the audience that night, we'll put it in our next newsletter too. They've gone unclaimed, I hate for someone to be missing their glasses. So with that, I know Amy was talking about our collaboration with our first responders in the community as part of our continuation of that. We will have and host first responder training, the police, fire, et cetera. We'll be using the high school facility. Large portions of the high school campus for training Wednesday, July 20th through Saturday, July 23rd. So we'll remind families in our community of that because on those days, you'll see a lot of emergency vehicles up there, and I don't want anyone to panic thinking that something is amiss with students or staff, so just, you know, welcome them to our campus to use the facilities for training exercises, and we'll remind community of that later. We talked a little bit about the SIR survey at the last board meeting. We formally approved that. That was launched. We sent the district newsletter out a little early. We published today on Monday versus Wednesday, just to give people another reminder. We sent press releases, we sent it directly to families. Community members, just a reminder, can subscribe to our newsletter. It'll come to you directly by email, and told people to share it far and wide. So that is again, open through Wednesday, so just a reminder, it's all over our website. If you can't find it, give us a call, we're happy to lead you to where you can get that. And again, it's important to note that the funds are one-time federal funds, and if you're interested in more information around those federal funds, those one-time funds, where they've come from, where they've gone thus far, visit our website, there's a whole page dedicated to that. And we're, again, just making sure to reiterate those are our one-time funds, so while they've been used in a variety of manner, we, we just need to be cognizant of that going forward. Out-of-country travel is going to be resuming, so that's a big new item, so I just wanted to give the board a little bit of background because you're gonna be seeing, normally you would see these requests in fall and in spring because they're, they're more run on a cycle and they come about a year in advance, but with countries opening up travel, guidelines shifting, those kinds of things, we're excited to be able to put together two trips for your action. That would be for France in March of this spring and Germany in March for this spring. So that information generally we bring to the board, it's a structured process for discussion first and then action, but just with timing and how things are unfolding, I thought I would foreshadow that here, make sure the board has the information so that we can actually put it on a next agenda. It's really critical for the kids to get a jump on that for any fundraising that they're going to do to help offset the costs, given that that trip is gonna be right here before you know it in March. So, out-of-country travel, just for our public and the board members, it's an extension of, it might be a foreign language class, it might be another service class, but it's designed to be an extension of their learning in the classroom, and we haven't traveled outside the country since 2019. I know that Assistant Superintendents Andy Sarnell and Laura Jackson were both highly involved with the principals and those who usually do out-of-country trips to kind of take a new look, with a new perspective, what needs to be put in place. There'll be trip insurance, there'll be different components to cover families, make sure that there's not exposure for, you know, financial, if something should happen, that kind of thing, so all those checks and balances we'll go through, but be ready to look at that at our future for action. So are there any questions or things you want me to make sure that we include? Again, because it's out of the norm for us to bring an item for action the first time you see it, but there's a lot of procedural pieces that are consistent with out-of-country trips. Are there any things you wanna make sure we speak to with anything?
I think, you know, the trip insurance is critical, obviously, and then maybe just to understand what cancellation type of information looks like, you know, is there some type of act or clause in there? Should there be some health crisis?
Yeah, yeah, we account for that, and, you know, certainly, you know, quarantine was the biggest thing to start navigating and understanding if there's different rules and what those look like, but we'll, we'll make sure and bring that forward as part of the discussion.
Yeah, and then I guess I wouldn't mind saying, and I realize this will change, but different countries have different rules as to, you know, what happens, how often people have to test in their community. I would hate for our students to go and all get quarantined to some little tiny hotel room and not be able to enjoy their trip, so I wanna make sure that there's, you know, ample opportunity for, for that not to happen.
If anything should come up, if you think of any questions or things you want us to make sure to include in that presentation of information so that you're feeling comfortable with a call for action that evening, just reach out and let me know. Again, just looking forward to restoring that experience for our kids, but as you said, making sure we're not, you know, exposing them to some risk financially, things of that nature. That's all I have to report.
Anyone have other questions for Superintendent Wimmer, board members? Okay, we will move on then to our action items. So this evening, we have the annual parental notice of standards. I'd like to have Laura So this evening we have the annual parental notice of standards. I'd like to have Laura Jackson come forward, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for having me again tonight. The annual notice of parental, annual parental notice of standards is in place every year so that the board approves the notice going home to families. We have the opportunity to put it up on our website and we'll always include it in our newsletter. But it's just the notice that these are the standards that are going to be in place for the upcoming school year. All of the standards that we have before you have been previously approved by the board. And we do know that the state is looking at health standards, so we expect there to be some periods of public feedback on that. And we're gonna be taking a really close look at the new world language standards and math standards again this year. But the standards that are approved are on the list and that would be ready to be posted for families. Do you have any questions about the notice?
Anyone? Questions for Laura? We did see this prior at a meeting.
Yes, and Lenny Spurgat did a wonderful summary of it from the curriculum meeting as well.
So then I'd like to make a motion to approve the annual parental notice of academic standards. Second by Melanie. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. And then I believe this is also you, the French Advanced Placement Chemistry and Advanced Placement Environmental Science textbooks.
Correct. We also spoke about this at the last board meeting. And just to remind you, the French courses that are French one, two, three, and four, we'll use a portion of these textbooks as well. Are, the, have been reviewed by staff, have been really looked at and dug deeply into. They dug deeply into the text and then put these out for public comment. We also put out for public comment the chemistry textbook for AP chemistry, which is Advanced Placement Chemistry. So students who take that class have the opportunity to earn college credits. And AP Environmental Science, again, a course that follows the College Board agenda and syllabi. And gives students the opportunity to take a test and potentially earn college credit for those courses. So all of these textbooks were vetted by staff. We put them out for public comment. I did not receive any public feedback on these. We talked about this at the, our last board meeting. I did update the costs based on actual student numbers and the three-year trend of students enrolled in the courses. To, and projecting those forward. So the costs are updated from the previous presentation or previous information received. It includes the costs of textbooks for the students as well as the teacher resources and teacher training.
Any questions for Laura? We looking for a motion then?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the French Advanced Placement Chemistry and Advanced Placement Environmental Science primary resource textbooks.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That motion passes. It looks like we're onto the discussion portion. If Mr. Lenny Hanson, our Director of Human Resources could join us for the twenty-two, twenty-three Certified Staff Expertise Pay and Micro-Credential Offerings. Say that fast five times. That is the most.
Say it five times, I'll end the slide.
All right.
Right, we have an extra pair here, Lenny. This is when we miss Tim Harder. He usually has all this up for us.
All right, we run the expertise page, please, correct.
Yep. So what we'll be doing tonight is just a real brief refresher around the Certified Staff Compensation Model as well as this component of it, which comes up for annual review and update. I'll foreshadow some directions that strategically we were, we'd like to take with these, with this component. And really just foreshadowing future action, which will include more specifics and things like that. So. So quick refresher, the Certified Staff Compensation Model or framework. What it is built around is, is our, our compensation system for, you know, people think of teachers, but Certified Staff is a lot more than just teachers. It includes all of the other Certified Staff areas, counselors, college, special education, intervention, all of those areas. So the, the framework targets opportunities for increasing compensation for staff that acquire additional expertise in areas that the district pre-approves of. So they, those areas have to align, as it says in the second bullet point, to the district's strategic direction and goals. So that it's really driven by what the district will find most valuable for impacting students. The system values, you know, both expertise that helps students find that career success as well as college readiness, which aligns to what the district mission is. It's not just about one or the other. Looks to provide opportunities for that growth in expertise as well as compensation at all levels, all the way up from pre-K all the way up through the secondary levels of that. And then the, the model itself has been, you know, set in place for several years now. But there are certain components of it that it calls for to be annually reviewed and updated. And then that's one of the areas that we are looking at today, which is the expertise pieces. So as we've been doing some research, we've been investigating additional opportunities for acknowledging and encouraging acquiring the different expertise areas. So I'm gonna do a high-level overview of some of the big focus areas that we've had. As again, we look at both college readiness and career success and how we can have the most qualified staff possible to deliver on that mission. So first and foremost, when we talk about aligning to the district's strategic direction, we continue with an emphasis on literacy expertise. So one of the things acted on earlier this year was our ERE course, which is part of this menu. We continue to provide additional expertise pay around having reading licenses. Looking at adding the literacy specialist license, which is an even higher level, but expertise in the area of literacy. We are also looking at AP certification. We know that our community is proud that the West Bend High Schools offer the greatest variety of AP courses that you're gonna find anywhere around. Well, that requires staff who are certified to teach those. You can teach AP without the certification technically, but you're not getting the level of, of, the type of the student experience nor the type of student success that we see on our AP tests from the teachers that we have who are all officially certified in delivering AP instruction by the College Board. We know there's value in that, and we see that each year when our AP scores come back as exemplary as they do. That's on that, that kind of college readiness side of, of, of the, the table. But we also wanna remember the career success piece of the mission. And that's where some of our other items go in terms of additional licensures around vocational licensing and things like that. As well as, as well as certifications on career and technical education areas, which are highlighted by the state's Act fifty-nine legislation. What Act fifty-nine is, is it really lays out a series of different types of certifications around technical education, business education, family consumer science education that often align to what you might acquire at technical college or in other certification areas. So these are certifications that potentially a student can take directly to the workforce. You know, some of the more common ones that you might think of, that, that the, the layman might be more familiar with might be like ASE certification around autos and things like that. We have teachers who are qualified and certified in several of those types of areas. And when you're certified in that, the Act fifty-nine legislation lets you deliver that same certification then to your students. So that our students can walk out with a whole host, I don't know what the number is up to now, but it's a, a dozen, dozens of just different certifications that our students can leave the high school with that immediately allow them to enter the workforce. So our, our, our goal here is to provide incentive for staff to acquire those certifications by providing modest compensation tied to holding those certifications. Also, kind, in, in, you know, really looking at responding to ensuring that we have the best environment for students and meeting the behavioral needs of our students, looked at, we are looking at opportunities for providing additional coaching to staff around support for behavioral student needs and behavioral intervention strategies. There's some micro-credentiaal opportunities that we've looked at tied to that. We've also looked at making sure that we're not losing track of any particular area, right? Like our students, all six thousand of them, they're involved in a wide range of different activities that are met by a wide range of different teacher types and Certified Staff types, right? So things like world language, there's some very high-level world, world language type certifications that really make that teacher more than just your, your typical type world language teacher, but that upper echelon expert. And we found some opportunities that we think incentivize that. DHH, definitely hard to hear in services, you know, we wanna remember all of our students. We've looked at some opportunities to incentivize some extra expertise for our speech teachers, which is actually, that one in particular is a financial benefit to the district because the opportunity that we identified allows those speech teachers to be able to build the Medicaid system for services that we provide. In that, that the, the Medicaid system then doesn't have to. So they actually reimburse the school district and that alone, the district receives hundreds of thousands of dollars in reimbursements from Medicaid four. So it's kind of a win-win. We get the higher, even higher training teachers as well as these reimbursements from the state because of the ability to build those services. We are looking at also then for the fall, being able to create an opportunity for staff to make suggestions, recommendations, nominations, whatever you wanna call them, of additional opportunities for the future. I know I'm not the expert in every single content area that we offer. So we wanna create, so we've been creating a rubric and submission opportunities for staff to help grow this menu. Again, it's all about really making us a district that is a home base for high-level expertise. And, and we know that we have a lot of really expert staff who can help feed that, that goal. Looking at a projected July twenty-fifth follow-up with the board with additional information. The other annual updates is really looking at, are there any areas that already exist that we need to do a modest increase for to keep up with just inflationary rates and things like that? By doing kind of small annual increases, that way you avoid what the district has run into in, in past years over a couple decades, which is, is catch-up provisions where you find that things have been frozen for several years and now you need a larger provision catch-up. So just analyzing where there may be for those pieces as well. So again, just trying to foreshadow a deeper discussion that'll be coming on the twenty-fifth. But at this point, I think if there are any questions about the system.
Remind me again, where, where do our staff members take these classes?
So the certifications are actually a wide range of areas. We do have some partner universities that we've worked with in the past and will continue to work with. But really our goal is to create lots of opportunity so that we don't pigeonhole into one specific area. So Concordia University has been a great partner for us and they continue to be for facilitating some of these offerings, which by being offered by a four-year accredited university ensures that those certifications are transferable, you know, anywhere. But really on a lot of these, you talk about AP, other, you know, licensures, reading licenses, special education, additional licenses. By offering it as part of a licensure program, that ensures that we don't have to maintain like an internal economy around professional development of these, but these are, you know, gonna be around for the long haul in the marketplace. And our staff can shop around and find the best program that fits their needs. And then, you know, that, that would qualify for licensure from one of the, you know, kind of standard statewide or nationwide licensing type organizations. So like board certification, great example. That's a national board certification, right? So we try to find ones that are, that, that have that kind of tie-in to another organization so that it's not where it's here this year, but next year it's gone. You know, we want things that are gonna stand the test of time.
And then remind me again, if I, if I enroll in a class that's a, costs two thousand dollars, the district doesn't pay for that upfront. And as it relates to the pay of the employee, the district, if you get that certification, you have an opportunity to earn more pay, which maybe over the course of two years pays that back. And then in year three, gets more money in your own pocket, if you will, correct?
Correct. The, the upfront investment is by the staff. They pay the tuition, they complete the coursework. It's only after it's been completed and documentation's been submitted that then the, you know, corresponding stipend that goes with that is applied for the teacher. The amount of time that it takes to recruit your initial investment really changes, right? Because it depends on which university you go through, all those sorts of things. But, and then also somewhat can be tied to, you know, its alignment with certain targeted things, right? So with ERE, which we came to the board earlier this year, we are heavily invested in ensuring that we get as many ERE reading certified staff as possible. And then, you know, the stipends are kind of determined commensurate with alignment with those goals for sure.
Thank you.
I just have a comment and then maybe two questions. You can come to the July twenty-fifth with just a little bit more detail on. Just a comment is, I'm glad we were talking about it today and we need to talk about it more. Just our advanced placement and our career and technical education is outstanding. We set ourselves apart from the community. We get our kids with options and ready and I just think we did need to do more of that. So I like having our certifications and staff tied to that. So maybe just two questions that are like, what percentage of the staff have these certifications? Would be a question and are we seeing that rate go up? And then how much extra money is being paid annually to people with these certifications as it affects the budget items? So sure, I think it's.
On the first one, the number is gonna, on both of these, it's gonna be a little bit difficult today for me to give you kind of detail without, with it being memorable. And the, the number of staff holding the certifications, you know, really depends what level we're talking about, right? So the reading license is far more common at the elementary or maybe middle elementary level. The, you know, obviously AP and the Act fifty-nine certification is gonna be, you know, at the secondary level. So it's really gonna be dependent on which certification we're looking at. You know, a big part of this is, yes, there are some staff that currently have these certifications, but we wanna largely incentivize to grow that number even more so, right? Especially on certain things like with AP. So we may only have one teacher this year who's teaching, or it might be AP Biology, I just threw it out there as an example, right? But we, we know that having that training from AP is beneficial to all biology courses, not just AP. On top of that, that allows us to deepen our bench, you know? So let's say our regular, in this case, AP bio teacher goes on LEAVEX, has a, something like that. We, this gives us, it benefits the district in that we have other people who can step in and provide the really high-quality training for that course. Whereas most districts in that situation, they end up putting a sub in who isn't trained and, and students don't get as really experienced. So this really sets a district up to provide really excellent continuity of experience for its students as well. On the career cert, the, the, the career and technical education side of things, you know, that's where you see a very large number of different certification types. You know, this, I, I believe this model will help us retain the staff that we have. We are very blessed to have eight tech ed teachers alone, plus four business ed teachers and three family consumer science teachers making up that whole career and tech ed group there. And we've been able to retain, for example, on the tech ed side, which is probably the most competitive teacher market that's out there today. We've been able to retain those staff several years in a row, which most places can't say. And by growing the program the way we have, we've also been able to really specialize in a lot of areas there. Where you go to a smaller school or a school that hasn't invested as well in tech ed, they're asking one teacher to teach carpentry, welding, robotics, you know? Whereas the way we continue to invest in this and the way we're proposing to continue to invest, we think helps us continue to just really build that expertise above and beyond what you're gonna see anywhere else. So in terms of the actual dollar amounts, they vary by certification. So when we come forward with more information, you know, I'll, I'll provide those for you. The existing ones already in place, we have public. The existing ones already in place, we have publicly available and staff can currently see them. What I'm really talking about are, are expansion of that, and we'll bring that forward at that next meeting opportunity.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions for Lenny on this topic? Okay, looks like you're up next for the stock loss insurance renewal information.
We aren't ready to bring the renewal forward, but the reason that we're bringing an overview forward at this point is that stock loss insurance operates a little bit differently from most other insurance products in that your renewal timeline ends up being very quick. You know, I'll explain why that is in a short amount of time. So I want to front page some information as just a refresher around stock loss insurance for everyone. We generally only talk about it once a year, and it's kind of a complicated matter you don't typically deal with regularly in any field, so want to be able to refresh that and position us so that when the opportunity comes for renewal, that we are poised to act. So I'm just going to have kind of three key overviews today. What is stock loss insurance? A little bit about the market for stock loss insurance, and then just our projections, and then a timeline for action. So again, trying to keep it as simple as possible here. So stock loss insurance is going to cover your entire health insurance plan. Your health insurance plan is really two things. It's your medical coverage, so paying doctors' claims, E R bills, urgent care, all those sorts of claims, as well as your pharmacy claims are also protected by stock loss insurance. So, you know, we generally think the pharmacy is, oh, I got to go down and get the, you know, $10, $15 prescription at Walgreens, but pharmacy can be administered in a hospital, and pharmacy can be extremely expensive, which we're going to talk about momentarily, because it's becoming the largest driver of cost on stock loss insurance. So what stock loss insurance, why have it, is first and foremost, it saves money for the district. It allows the district to operate as a self-funded insurance organization. You would not operate as a self-funded organization without stock loss insurance. There are basically two ways to operate, a fully funded organization or a self-funded. Fully funded is what you're going to find in smaller organizations typically, and what they do is they go and call the insurance company and say, I want to buy insurance for my 400 and whatever member employees. What's it going to cost? And the insurance company says, you must pay whatever amount per month, okay? And it won't change that year, no matter if everybody goes to the doctor or nobody does. That's a fully funded organization. The organization knows the cost upfront and pays that month-to-month. The, the deal there is that your insurance company is going to want to make a profit, so they build a margin in their cost that they're charging, correct? The alternative is to be self-funded, which is what Westfenden School District is and what you're going to find in larger organizations. The school district actually maintains a reserve where we pay the cost of all claims directly out of our reserves. So if I myself is employed in the district, don't go to the doctor all year, the district pays $0 for my care because I didn't have any claims. Conversely, if I am having major surgeries or a major illness, the district's going to pay all of those expenses. So stock loss insurance is your protection in that situation. It stops your losses at a certain dollar, so that's called stock loss insurance. For example, someone, our stock loss insurance cutoff is $250,000 per person. So let's say I, you know, suffer from a catastrophic illness, it's going to cost $1 million in care, the district's only going to be responsible up to that first $250,000. The remainder will be covered under stock loss insurance. So if you don't have stock loss insurance, when I say why do you have it? If you don't have it, there is no limit on what your potential liability is, which is not obviously a place I'd ever want to holler. So it's a necessary expense for, for self-funded organizations. We choose to be self-funded because we save a significant amount of money by not paying that margin to the insurance company. The profit margins are sizable in the insurance industry, as you can probably guess, and by self-insuring, we're cutting out that middleman person and the profit that they're taking. Stock loss, stock loss insurance is kind of part of the, the cost you incur because of that. And then there's different pieces I don't need to get into individually, we have different indicators and such and such. So the information about our specific stock loss policy, with our current vendor, it's called Q B E. We pay annual premium about $630,000, a sizable amount. But when I talk to you in a moment about the, the costs associated with high-cost claims, you will see why. Each year, we're given a maximum possible increase amount for our renewal. So on a renewal this year, they'll say, here's your amount for this year, and next year, we can't increase it more than X percent, which is obviously beneficial for us for planning purposes and avoiding any kind of catastrophic situation. Stock loss insurance, the reason that it'll come up for renewal a little bit odd times is because the policy year that it just happens to be on is kind of a off timeline, it's September to August 31st. So we talked about the stock loss market. Comes up for renewal each year. It is one of, if not the most volatile insurance market that exists in just insurance markets in general. That is because it is largely tied to the claims that you have from your employees and because of the constant flow of new expensive medical care opportunities for, for people to be able to have. So the first volatility piece is around your own claims. So we may have several years where we don't have any, anyone hitting that $250,000 mark for what's called a high-cost claim. Well, then stock loss insurance is going to say, hey, you're not going to cost us anything. We're going to, we're going to drop your rates. Rates are looking real good. You can get one or two high-cost claimants with a very significant illness that may potentially be a recurring illness year after year, and that can result in a substantial increase in your premium, simply off of just a small number of people. That makes the volatility very high. At the same time, we live in a great country that has the most advanced medical care in the world, and that's because we're developing new treatments, new drugs all the time, while those new treatments, new drugs are very expensive. So we also lead the world in terms of expensive healthcare options. And that particularly, you know, as I say in the next point, you know, applies to pharmacy. There are some drugs out there that, you know, thank God that they, they save lives that otherwise would not be saved, but they're unbelievably expensive. I mean, there are drugs out on the market now, several drugs right now, that a single dose can cost more than $1 million, or where one year's supply can cost you $2 million, right? Well, that, when you look at a premium of $600,000, well, one of those drugs alone obviously beats up the entire premium and then some. So stock loss carriers have to protect themselves against those situations. And if you have someone come on your plan, or a few people come on your plan, the potential users of those high-cost drugs, that's going to significantly impact your renewal. So therefore, stock loss insurance reacts very strongly to major medical conditions. Like I said, a few people can impact it heavily. So the final piece here is we just kind of look ahead on our projections and timing. So the market norm right now is actually lower than previous years at a 20 to 25% renewal, which you might say, holy cow, that's a high renewal rate, and I don't expect that, accept that on many things, but in stock loss, that's actually a decent year, often it's 30, 35% because of the reasons that I explained earlier. That's the market norm. Our renewal is going to be very specific to harsh, specific situations and the medical needs of our particular plan participants. Our renewal cost, based on initial information that we have around the usage of our high-cost claimants, is expected to be above that 20% number, but we'll see where it comes at. Our insurance brokers are currently in those negotiations. You end up with a very short timeframe for renewal. So we'll bring that forward for action next time around. And the reason you have a short timeframe for renewal is every month you go by, the stock loss carriers will rerun the data every month and see are there any new high-cost things that have come up. So when, when you get the quote, the time to act is immediately before a new month's data comes up. So I've tried to give a brief overview of that. It's not something we talk about very often, except once a year, not the most exciting topic either, but hopefully I've kind of explained it so, so that we can set the table for when that renewal comes up. Perhaps at the next board meeting, if not, you know, right away in August.
Any questions for Mr. Hanson from the board?
How often do you shop around providers?
Every year.
Every year.
So stock loss is different from a lot of insurance markets that, okay, you start with 20 vendors, more than half right off of that say, we're not interested. It's such a risky market that they don't vastly expand their books of business very quickly because they have to be so careful who they take on as new business because of the volatility of it. So immediately you slash out a chunk of them, and then it narrows out. But we go to bed on this every year.
The renewal cost, you said it was a little bit higher than the normal, that's all built into the budget already, though. You guys expect, what do you guys usually expect for a renewal?
So, stock loss renewal is a component of our entire health insurance renewal. So what, what Andy and the finance team will do is they'll work with the insurance broker to take whatever that stock loss renewal is, and then they'll build that into the total insurance plan renewal. So let's say, let's say we're planning on an 8% increase in the cost of health insurance. That would include whatever the stock loss increase has been. As the year progresses, starting in April, we already start to get some very preliminary projections of our health insurance renewal, and then as more data comes in each month, that projection kind of firms up as time goes on. We generally end up with a, with a firm projection in August for the following year, because what you're really doing is you're using prior year claims to imagine what it's going to be for January 1st of the next year. So your insurance plan doesn't operate on fiscal year, your insurance plan is on calendar year, which is another kind of, you know, caveat that you have to build into that. So if we come back with a bigger than 20% renewal on stock loss, which I think is likely at this point, given some of the information we have just about on claims that are on our plan, that will cause a nudging up of the overall health insurance renewal budget that, that Andy and his team are doing. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Yeah. So, so put in perspective, so I said $630,000 for stock loss insurance. The entire health insurance plan is $12 million, okay? So 20% on 600 is roughly $120,000, $130,000. So out of 12 million, not as big of an impact as it is on just the stock loss. I think that's right ahead.
I just wanted to hear about it. Anybody else?
Well, I just got one comment and a last question, just, I'd give you a, I'm explaining the insurance. I learned a lot and I've been around the block, so thank you for helping educate myself and just our community on the different types of insurance, because it is, if you think of our overall cost per student, that $12 million is in there, and maybe just my question is, if we were to go to market, and I know we have a very good plan, what would we be spending if we didn't spend our $12 million on a self-insured plan? Would it be 15 million? Would it be 20 million for a comparable plan in the insurance market space?
So I don't want to speculate too much, but I can say I was talking to another H R director of a, some, a little bit, not a little bit, smaller than us district, maybe four to 5,000 students, and they were going from fully insured to self-insured, and they were going to save a minimum of $1 million, and they're smaller than us. So again, you can't, you can't perfectly predict it, but I would feel extremely confident saying that it's undoubtedly in the seven figures what we save by being self-funded. We also just, and Andy can speak to this better than I ever could, around certain flexibilities that you have in the way you design your plan and option, options and opportunities you provide for staff in a self-funded plan that the government doesn't allow fully insured plans to provide.
Thank you for the excellent observations. All right, looks like our next information is future agenda items. Our next board meeting, oh, actually, pardon me, we have a curriculum meeting scheduled for July 19th at 8:30 at the Education Service Center. We have a regular board meeting scheduled for July 25th at 5:30 here at the Education Service Center. July 27th, we have a policy committee meeting scheduled for 4:00 PM here again at the E S C. And then August 8th, another regular scheduled board meeting at 5:30 at the Education Service Center. And would there be any information that you would like for follow-up or future communication from superintendent or any of the other departments? Anyone on the board?
I understand.
Yes.
And I did run this by Jen, she can make up all notes because I was struggling with how to pass these. But I just wanted to bring up for future items or discussion, when the next discussion, we can include attention to removal of the S R funds in the years that comes and ways we can achieve a balanced budget. And that's kind of regarding some of the, the Jackson Elementary, you know, conversation that we can start looking at again. I think it's kind of important to start, you know, bringing that up again and discussing, you know, how we're going to help that community grow with a new school, or, you know, what the possibility is to take that S R grant or funds and stuff and see if there's other ways to use it for, for those, so.
So we talked a little bit, just, I, I've got that, our next piece that Andy will do in budget is at our next July meeting, so I'll have him more just target that and include that so you can see that separately. And then we'll be on track to do our facilities update in August to talk about those components, and we'll really kind of extract a whole Jackson Elementary piece and talk about options there. So we'll make sure and include those on formal board agendas. Anything else, anyone? Okay, then I will make a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility and take any such, excuse me, any such action if necessary based on its discussion, mainly compensation and employment. And this will be a roll call, votes.
I'll second.
Sorry.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Donaldson.
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Justin votes yes. Mr. Zwyer is absent. Mr. Saragat?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt is also absent.